...listed on the agenda may be addressed by the council. Since items presented as part of a speaker's request have not been listed on the agenda, and due to the requirements of open meeting laws, the council will be unable to respond to items presented as part of the speaker's request. However, please be aware that your comments will be noted. The speaker's name will be called to speak at the appropriate time in the order that the forms were received. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Peoria City Council meeting.
The Peoria City Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Leoni.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Patanna.
Here.
Councilmember Finn.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Council Liaison Johnson.
Here.
Council Liaison Gilbertson.
Here.
Good evening, good evening, good evening, and welcome to the Peoria City Council meeting of March 19th, 2019. The first item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Council, are there any items to be removed from consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
A motion in a second, please vote. The consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to new business, and we'll begin with item 18R, Budget Amendment, Capital Improvement Program Project Funding. Mr. Tyne.
Great, thank you. And we have John Sefton, our Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Director, will present on this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have two items that we're going to make a single presentation on, so two action items. The first one being 18R, which is a budget amendment for two CIP project funding items. And I'm going to hand this over to Jake Easton, who's going to jump into the details on the program itself.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Tonight, I'm just going to provide an overview of the projects that we will be discussing to just give a general understanding of the planned improvements that we have for each the Sweetwater Park and the basin improvements at 109th and Adams. So the picture to the left is the existing site in its current condition, and this is the site or the condition that you'll see a majority of our basins and mids throughout the Peoria inventory. So what we wanted to do is create a goal to evaluate this particular site and create a multifunctional space that would balance the operational needs as well as provide some aesthetic enhancements to the area. So through that process, we actually developed this conceptual design that will be ready for construction in the next coming weeks. As you can see through the design, we were able to integrate a variation in rock sizes and colors to accent the new eight-foot accessible sidewalk that patrons and local citizens will be able to utilize. Along that pathway, we also have new seating that is in close proximity to our new shade trees. We did, as far as the landscape aesthetic enhancements, are going from a monoculture to a variety of tree species, really to just add to the diversity and the plant palette within that basin itself. We also are implementing the strategy of right tree, right place, as you can see by the picture on the right-hand side. In the right corner, a tree strategically placed next to a wall, next to a homeowner's pool, causes a lot of issues for us from a maintenance perspective, so want to make sure that we're being strategic about the placement of those trees. It was alluded to in the livability topics about the basin refresh program. This is actually a concept that we will look to implement throughout that program as we move forward, and this will be our seventh basin that we've improved over the last two years, so really looking forward to continuing this program. But going through the process, we actually created some budget savings with this project. And with those budget savings, we are looking to or asking to reallocate those funds to Sweetwater Park. With Sweetwater Park, we do have the budget capacity within this year's budget to make site improvements. Those areas that are currently funded are actually the green dots on the screen, and with the additional funding, we'll look to expand those improvements with the red dots to enhance the overall park experience for the local citizens. We'll jump into the green dots. The green dots, our main focal point, is really continuing our advancement of providing inclusive playgrounds within our neighborhood park system. Our goal is to provide a recreational amenity for children of all abilities. And with the improvements, we will be able to provide better accessibility with pathways and routes to accessible features. Also, the picture on the right actually shows as well some of our planned improvements, and that's integrating shade throughout the playground area. As you can see, a lot of the assets are exposed to the natural elements, and in Arizona, those get very hot during the summertime, so we will look at integrating shade as well. So John alluded to this earlier, actually, in the livability topics. As I mentioned, this project is actually already through the design process, and because it is, it does have the budget capacity, and just wanted to highlight that process that it goes through on the design and concept side, where we do reach out to the local schools and the kids to get their feedback and engage with them, because they are the experts. They provide us the really good feedback of what works good, what doesn't work good, after we have those inclusive elements already included in the package. So they really enjoyed the process of seeing the park transition from paper to the construction process to actual recreational amenity that they get to use on a daily basis. So the unfunded portions of the project that the remaining funds from the basin project could improve include sport court surfaces, so these are the high-use assets, park site lighting, retrofitting existing lighting with LED lighting, park benches that, again, have succumbed to the environmental conditions through the summertime, so we will be replacing those light poles that need to be replaced, chain link fencing around those sport court areas, and we will also pursue landscape improvements around the perimeter of the park to really address the curb appeal, so when people drive, the park is really an inviting area that they want to come and enjoy. With that, we'll do our best to answer any questions that you may have specific to this item. Again, it is transferring budget savings from one CIP project to the Sweetwater Park project. There's no additional funds requested. It actually worked out to be within $600 or so, so we were able to make a major impact at Sweetwater Park with the improvements that Jake has described.
Councilmember Finn?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you for addressing those concerns at Sweetwater Park. Somewhat in desperate need of a facelift, and I know the neighbors around there are going to greatly appreciate that and are going to be very grateful for that improvement. So thank you so much for finding innovative ways to get that done. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I wholeheartedly approve of this, but just one comment I wanted to make. I think probably outside of the finished product, which will be amazing, the best part of this is you employing the children to be a part of it, way beyond their input. You are creating citizens of the future. You're creating members of our community who feel that they have a voice, and hopefully they'll be able to exercise that as they go on through school. I don't remember anybody ever asking me what I wanted in school, nor do I remember my children ever saying that they were asked, and don't actually think my grandchildren have said that either. So this is just an amazing, and we heard it earlier, too, where in our reports that children were being incorporated, and part of the decision-making, that's just brilliant on so many levels, so kudos. I'm sure your department's doing that a lot more, too, so excellent.
Thank you, and I just want to say how appreciative I am of the inclusive playgrounds that we're installing in various places throughout the city. It is so important that we reach all of our citizens and allow all of them to have the ability to play and to be included in playgrounds that we build. So thank you for that. I did have one question about the 107th Avenue retention basin. You talked about the intentionality of the whole park, but the trees themselves, were they specifically chosen for purposes of shade?
The trees that were specifically chosen were for the shade canopy. We obviously don't want the fast-growing trees that we have and succumb to storm damage, so they will take a little bit longer to develop, but more sustainable long-term. There are unique features in the colors and the variety of the trees, but shade is always very important when we take into consideration the species selection.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I couldn't tell from the picture, but are there some benches placed under those shade trees?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, well, it looks great to me. So, Council, do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion in a second.
Council, please vote. We are voting on item 18R. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. And so, your presentation was for both. Okay, then we can go ahead and ask for a motion on item 19R.
Actually, yeah, we haven't done 19R yet, Mayor.
We're not doing them both at the same time? Even another presentation?
I apologize. They're here for a close presentation, but they'll actually do something separate regarding the next item, which is an amendment of the $80,000 for Rio Vista Parks Inclusive Park.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, then.
We'll go right ahead. Thank you, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Your comments earlier on the inclusive playground actually provided for a great transition here. This request is actually moving CIP dollars from FY 2020 to current, so that we can begin the design aspect and the public outreach component to the inclusive playground at Rio Vista. That playground is getting aged, and it is one of our most popular, and Jake will take it from here.
Mayor and Council, thank you. So the focus of our design efforts will be within the area outlined in red. We believe there are opportunities within this footprint to activate and really enhance the experience beyond just the playground area, to create that destination that is already sought after, but enhance that area as well. The design initiatives that will look to navigate the design process will be to create an inclusive and accessible play area, integrate interactive and sustainable elements, as well as incorporate additional shade elements, and promote social engagement. As John mentioned, we do anticipate or are hopeful to start that design process, so we can try to execute this project in the hot summer months when the playground is not used as much. And just to dive in on a little bit of those initiatives, create an inclusive and accessible play area, we want to be intentional about integrating these elements within the actual play area. And when we think of a playground, our thought typically goes to the physical component, but if we focus on the entire child, we need to focus on the social, emotional, the sensory, the cognitive, as well as the communication piece. So we're really embracing those five domains to create an amenity that can sustain for a long time. And as we, when you go to the next slide, just to give you an idea of areas, we discussed about activating other areas within the play area that can create those inclusive elements. This would be something that we would explore through the design process and obviously get public feedback on, but taking a barren sidewalk and integrating an LED light display that can be projected on that hardscape to provide, just to transform the park area during the evening time. So that would be a Level 1. A Level 2 would be taking it a step further and utilizing energy harvesting walking panels within that walk area. It would actually power the LED projection light display and really add some educational interpretive signage to give that immediate response and understanding to the kids to see what impact they're having and have that engagement with the actual site. Another area that we'll look to impact is the integration of interactive, sustainable elements, and this is just, we have natural landforms that are in place now that we can accent and combine play and sustainability to achieve water conservation. So by activating these turf slopes, which during the summer in Arizona consume a large amount of water, we're able to save a lot of water, but also provide a unique recreational element that doesn't exist in a lot of playgrounds throughout the area. And last, we'll look to incorporate additional shade elements. The natural shade does exist within the site with our tree inventory now, but we could potentially look at water harvesting elements that could serve as a multifunction shade canopy. Also, integrating art elements that can cast unique patterns and colors on those hardscape areas, so they do transform during the day and just not at nighttime through those LED projections. And at this time, we'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Hunt?
I just can't help but say, playgrounds have come a long way. Not just since my time, but just in the last few years. This is amazing, Jake. Thank you so much. Like I heard, you counted every tree in Peoria. Is that right? Good job.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and move that we accept this motion.
We have a motion in a second. Council, please vote. And it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is Call to the Public for Non-Agenda Items, and I have not received any speaker request forms, so I will move on to reports from the city manager. Mr. Tyne.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity. First off, I just wanted to take a moment to introduce someone new here to the city of Peoria in their first week. If I can ask Chris Dalman to stand. Chris is our new information technology director. Chris comes with over 20 years of experience, most recently with a five-year stint as the IT Director of City of Eugene, Oregon. She is a pleasure to talk with. We really enjoyed meeting her during the interview process. All of our directors had that opportunity, and we just thought we'd introduce you real quick.
Wonderful, welcome. Happy to have you here.
One last item that I had was just to talk about some recent coverage that we had had that was showcased on Channel 3, and this isn't by coincidence that this has occurred. I wanted to have Jen Stein, our Communications Director, really introduce this, as she was really, again, the brainchild behind this.
Thank you, Mr. Tyne. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before we jump into the video, I'm just going to give you a little background on Channel 3's Good Morning Arizona's Field Trip Friday, which is basically where the producers take three and a half hours of the show on the road, featuring various areas. Several years ago, we actually were featured on Field Trip Friday. We pitched it, and we were based or located at Lake Pleasant, and we decided to invite back Channel 3 with the goal to expand coverage citywide and have all areas of Peoria featured, so it gave us an opportunity to showcase our gems and attractions. It also allowed us a chance to team up with our community partners, businesses, tourism partners, Peoria Unified, to activate all the areas to make it lively and fun. Earlier tonight, you heard from the livability captains, and as I was listening to their presentations, they talked about all the innovative ideas and events and plans and programs and services that reflects your vision, and I can't help but think that's what really fuels the opportunities and for us to tell our stories and to successfully pitch. That's what makes us a distinguished city, and that's why we are garnering so much media attention and coverage. Chris Hock has mentioned earlier a part about identity, especially the P-83 area. What's exciting is our external audiences and partners are really capitalizing and picking up on our identity and image, and you're going to see that in the video I'm about to show. So with that said, thank you.
So much to brag about. Money Magazine, what, recently declaring this, what?
The number-one city in Arizona to laugh? Thank you for bringing that up.
There is, spring is in the air, obviously. We've got a spring storm pushing through, but there is, with spring, a nice little buzz in the air as well. Jamie Soreta has more on that.
We found an unbelievable opportunity. You can be a beekeeper, my friends, right here in Peoria. We're at 83rd Avenue and Tacoma. This is Honey High Farms.
Field Trip Friday here at the Peoria Sports Complex, and happily, we stepped inside for just a minute to check out the things in the team shop.
It's warm in here.
Yes, thank you.
But there's some really cool things.
Yeah, if you're coming to the game at Peoria Sports Complex tonight, I'm going to be singing the anthem.
All right, well, let's hear you again.
That I'm way too hard to love. Maybe I should just give up on soulmate.
Mary Lou, because you guys have such great shows and entertainment, a beautiful theater too here.
We do indeed, and this theater is the center of our Old Town Peoria area, and we do wonderful programs like Music on the Plaza.
What, Mom? Those pianos, it actually came in handy. I really can't play that much. You know, the arts community here in Peoria is alive and well. It is exciting, and on this Field Trip Friday, we are taking you to Arizona Broadway Theater here in Peoria. Mama Mia is on tap. Hang tight with the dinner theater.
That was, that truly was priceless. I mean, I, in every sense of the word, it was three hours of coverage on the city of Peoria. We could not have asked for more. Thank you so much for everything that you did to make that a big success.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That is all I have.
That is all? Just that one thing? All right. We are going to move on to reports from Council Youth Liaison Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought the livability presentation today was very informative, and it really makes me excited to live in Peoria. Recently, we had another youth advisory board meeting where we were given a presentation on transportation and the new pogo buses, and we continued to build teamwork. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Patanna?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, if I can, I would like to take this time to express my condolences towards the victims of the horrendous attack that occurred last week in Christchurch, New Zealand. My thoughts and prayers are with the family and friends who are still suffering in the aftermath and the dozens of victims who are still recovering in the hospital. As an American, we can empathize all too well with the feelings of shock and terror that swept the island country on Friday. As an elected official, I applaud Prime Minister Arndt and her refusal to give the attacker any sort of notoriety. perpetrators of these heinous acts deserve no such attention. We, as a society and media outlet, should focus on helping those affected in ways to prevent further senseless acts of violence. Again, my deepest sympathies go out to those affected by this incident. Many of you know that on September 9th, we are bringing in the Vietnam Moving Wall over at Rio Vista Park. Involved in that, bringing them here, is Kelly Kincaid, John Sefton, Tim Iden, and Chris Halitz Group. There's a lot that has to be, has to occur between now and September 9th, such as food for the volunteers, getting volunteers, opening and closing ceremonies, actually the building of the wall. Really, I'm really very excited about bringing this in. It's going to be able to showcase the new John McCain Memorial Plaza, as well as the entire veterans memorial, so September 5th and 9th will be a great time for the city of Peoria. And Jen, I'd like to thank you and your great work on Channel 3 showcasing Peoria. Nice work. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Finn?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. Councilmember Edwards and Councilmember Benzbacher and I attended the DC League of Cities Conference this past week. It was a wonderful trip. It's the first time I've actually gone and traveled to this particular conference, and I did publicly want to thank Senator McSally, pardon me, and Senator Sinema for their time to speak with us, as well as Congresswoman Lesko. They were extremely cordial and dedicated their time to us, and it was very impressive how they took that time and spent it with us. So I did want to make sure that I thank them, because I know that they tune in every Thursday to our, or, you know, to our...
They do.
Our meetings, Tuesdays to our meetings, right? So thanks for watching. But it was a fantastic trip. Like I said, it's the first time I've been there, and I promised I would get this in. Aside from the capricious behaviors and activities of Red Coat, we did manage to make our way through the trip okay, so I promised I would get that in somehow. Fantastic presentation by the livability captains. Thank you so much for that, and everyone that helped. That was a long list. If you looked at that list, that was a huge list of people that actually contributed to that. So I thank all of you, even though you weren't up here having the opportunity to speak. Thank you all for the work that you did on that. That was a fantastic presentation, greatly appreciated, and welcome, Chris, to the city of Peoria. You have landed in a fantastic place, surrounded by absolutely amazing coworkers, so welcome. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilman Finn said, we were at the League of Cities representing Peoria and had the great opportunity to meet with the Intergovernmental Affairs Office of the Department of Transportation. I want to thank Thomas for arranging that. We were able to talk quite some time with other Valley, West Valley leaders about the needs for transportation infrastructure here in the West Valley, so I really thank them for taking the time to talk to us. We also met with Senators McCain, or Sinema and McSally, and they were very cordial, opened up a lot of good dialogue between the city, and I just appreciate of that time. And then Representative Lesko, it's always a pleasure to talk to her, ask for, you know, we asked for her help in Paloma Park, and she was cordial and accommodating and getting that going, and then also talking a little bit about Luke Air Force Base and her commitment to keeping that base open for the West Valley. I think that's very important. Just also want to do a shout-out to some members of staff. I just want to congratulate Jamie Pardon, Gilbert Romero, and David Bay from Public Works. My understanding is that they passed a Transportation Preservation Technical Service Program, which, in my understanding, is, before they got certified, there's only one other person in all of Arizona that has that certification, so now we have three in the city of Peoria. So I just want to thank Public Works for that great job. And also, I just want to thank all the residents that came out to Park Fest at this last Friday. We had about 320 residents that came out and enjoyed the Winnie the Pooh movie, and thanks to the food trucks, it was just a phenomenal time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
I want to say thank you once again to the presenters and all the people that they represent in our city who put all the work into, not just the presentation, but doing the work that they presented. We really are an amazing city, and Chris, once again, you're going to know that you've landed in just the right place. You're going to stay here forever. And then I want to thank Jeff Tyne. You don't very often, really, you don't ask for recognition, you don't even talk very much up here, and I've told you this, Jeff, that I think the very best thing of all the good things you've done since you've been in your capacity, which I can't remember the name of right now, is the very best thing you've done is the people that you've hired, the people that you've put in place, and I think that what we saw in our earlier session really provides that. We've always had a great city, but we haven't always moved it forward and showcased it to our citizens, and I think really been as citizen-oriented as this group of staff that you've so carefully selected are. So again, kudos to you, and you don't take any recognition ever for the job that you do, but I think we all probably share that appreciation of you as whatever it is that you are.
City manager.
I knew that.
Councilmember Leoni?
Yeah, I want to thank all the volunteers for all the hard work they've done. You know, you can stay in Peoria, you can swim, you can fish, and you can also eat hot dogs, so I think it's important that we keep this going, amendment going, so we can keep our people working right here in Peoria. Thank you.
Thank you. Youth Counsel Liaison Gilbertson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give you guys a report on the teen job fair we had a couple weeks ago. It was a great turnout. We had about 15 local businesses that came and gave out applications and were hiring and gave interviews. We had 130-plus youth come, and it was a really great experience.
Thank you, 130 youth? That's great. Good for you. And I also wanted to say thank you to the livability captains... And I also wanted to say thank you to the livability captains and all of the people who contributed to this. It is truly a game changer for the city of Peoria, really. One day, you'll look back on this and go, I was part of that. This is, it's tremendous, really. Thank you all very, very much, and with that, we are adjourned.